The time being 5:00 PM and this being the Plymouth Select Board, I will call to order this, at this time, the first portion of tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board. The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. This is in relation to 450 Little Sandy Pond Road, otherwise known as the Atlantic Country Club, in regards to value of real property. The Chair does declare that doing this in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Do I have a motion to enter into executive at this time?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Golden. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Iaquinto. Any discussion about whether or not we should enter into the executive session? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We will come back at approximately 6:00 PM for the open session portion of our meeting. Thank you. The time being 6:17 PM and this being the Plymouth Select Board, I will call to order this, the open session of tonight's Tuesday, May 27th, 2025, meeting of the Plymouth Select Board. Please join the Board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format consistent with modifications made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth. We have members of the Board joining us here in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall. Presenters or members of the public may be joining us here in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall or over the Zoom webinar platform. The login information for the Zoom webinar platform is included on the agenda that is posted on the town website. Members of the public are also reminded that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. Presently, we are aware of a recording being made by the local scene for the Zoom and the cable broadcast. Members of the public can also watch this meeting, of course, on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. So that brings us into our agenda. We have first on our agenda, a number of licenses. Wish of the Board in regards to the licenses.
Mr. Chairman, unless my colleagues have reason to speak specifically about any of the individual licenses, I would make a motion that we move, as a group, the one-day wine and malt licenses, the one-day all alcohol licenses, the outdoor amplified music licenses, and the new vehicle-for-hire operator license.
Okay. Mr. Golden has moved to move all of the items listed under licenses as a group. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Iaquinto has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. That brings us into the administrative notes. We have nine administrative notes, the first of which is a set of meeting minutes from prior to the election. So I would seek to have that admin note separated out in case some of the new members wish to abstain from that. That will be up to them. Do I have a motion in regards to Admin Note 1?
Motion to approve.
All right. Do I have a second? I will second. All right. Has been moved. It has been seconded. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add, edit, alter, or otherwise change in regards to the proposed meeting minutes of May 6th? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. That brings us into the remaining admin notes. Admin Notes 2 through 9. The wish of the Board in regards to Admin Notes 2 through 9.
Mr. Chairman, if my colleagues don't have any further questions on the admin notes, I'll make a motion to approve Admin Notes 2 through 9.
As a group?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Quintle?
We have a request from a citizen to take number 3 separate. I think it was Cold's.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So Admin Note 3, separate. Does anyone wish to take any of the other admin notes, 2 and 4 through 9, separate? Or do we have a motion to approve those as a group?
So moved.
All right. 2 and 4 through 9 as a group. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right. Has been moved. It has been seconded. Any discussion about whether or not we should approve Admin Notes 2 and 4 through 9 as a group? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. That brings us back to Admin Note 3. Is Mr. Cody in attendance, either physically or virtually? No? I know we've received a letter in regards to this, but...
But...
Mr. Quintle?
Mr. Canty, we did receive a letter and there's no increase this year. So I think that pretty much answers it. I mean, unless there was another concern. Was there a Jade? No. So there's no increase to that. Been assured by Mr. Coyle, so I think we're...
We're good to go as is. Okay. Sounds good. Does anyone have anything else they would like to add about Admin Note 3 before I solicit a motion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve Admin Note 3?
So moved.
Has been moved by Mr. Golden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been seconded by Ms. Iaquinto. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved Admin Note 3. That concludes the admin notes. That brings us into our agenda proper. First item on our agenda would be the 2025 local election update by our town clerk.
I also have Tyler Hazard, the election coordinator, here with me. Thank you for this opportunity. I know we were here in February talking about the polling consolidation, so I like the opportunity to review how the election went. First of all, I'd like to start with that the officials, official results were posted on the website, has of Thursday afternoon, last Thursday afternoon, so I know we got the unofficial up there. We had to reconcile 133 hand-counted ballots, as well as numerous hand write-ins. So that being said, the turnout was 8,125 votes that day. So, or for this election, I should say. So as a reminder, these are the five locations that we consolidated the polling locations to. PCIS, West Elementary, Indian Brook School, Plymouth South Middle, and South Elementary. So I'm going to talk a little bit about PCIS, because that's the polling location that we consolidated, that had one precinct in it, and we put six in there. And if anybody voted there, you can see that you kind of walked in, there was a, we had election workers, if you didn't remember what your precinct number was, we could look that up for you. Also, at the same time, we had a sign that said if you voted at Hedges, you're precinct 1; if you voted at Cold's, you're precinct 2, because I know a lot of the voters knew where they voted, but maybe not their number. So this was a setup, and we've got some pictures of what it actually looked like. Believe it or not, there were election workers that were walking precinct 1, but this is the picture we got. So there were actually, you'll see that there's election workers behind those banners. So this is what the voters saw when they walked into PCIS. If you knew your, if you knew your precinct number, you walked up to that table, you got checked in, then you walked behind the table, voted the ballot, and on the far side were the tabulators that the ballots were installed, the ballots scanned into. This is Indian Brook. This looked a little bit different because of the electrical. Needless to say, we learned many lessons that we will be tweaking as future elections happen, and we kind of turned the tables around so we didn't have voters walking over electrical cords. So now I'm going to have Tyler come up and talk about the turnout on how the voters voted.
Thank you for having me. As Kelly mentioned, we had 8,125 voters participate in this year's local annual election, out of 52,899 voters registered here in town. That was the highest turnout by ballots cast for a local election in the last 10 years. And that turned out to be about 15.36% turnout for this election. In terms of voter behaviors, we saw once again that voters continue to utilize early voting as a means to participate in our elections here in town. We had 3,480 voters vote either early in-person or vote by mail, which was about 43% of total turnout. That was, and to break that down a little bit further, we had 1,739 in-person early votes and 1,771 vote by mail. So it was a rough even split for how voters who voted early chose to vote, either early in-person or by mail. On Election Day, we had the remaining voters, which the number I don't have, I don't have written down here, but I have it broken down by where they actually went. So you can see that PCIS had six precincts, so it had the most amount of voters walking through the door on Election Day. 1,366, West Elementary, 732, Indian Brook, 937, South Elementary, 729, South Middle, In terms of response on the day of the election, I was at PCIS all day. So I heard a lot from voters, I heard a lot from our election workers, and in addition to my own observations. I will say I was very pleasantly surprised by the reaction from voters. I heard, I was positioned at a table where most voters were walking directly by me as they were making their way to their check-in table, and the amount of times I heard people mutter under their breath, "Wow, this looks really nice. This is very professional. This is not what I expected." Honestly, astounded me. I was really excited to hear that response. Felt like a lot of the work that we put in was being noticed on Election Day, which was great, and it felt like they walked into a professional environment, which is exactly what we wanted them to feel walking in. In terms of the workers, the workers were very excited for the change, particularly on Election Day, because they thought it made sense. The flow was very smooth, and I think for their part, the biggest net positive is that there was so much knowledge sharing that was happening between election workers and clerks for each individual precinct, that if they had a question, not only was I there, but they could go right next door to the next precinct to ask a question about how to handle a certain situation. And that, I think, repeatedly showed it was exceedingly helpful and useful to our election workers, which was wonderful. In terms of my observations, like I said, I was there all day, which meant a third of the town was voting under my purview at all times, which was exceedingly beneficial for my ability to resolve problems. If there was an issue, it was immediately brought to my attention, and I was at that precinct check-in table or that tabulator within 60 seconds to resolve it, which previously what would happen if there was an issue is they would have to call us, eventually get me or Kelly on the phone, we'd have to drive 20 minutes, depending on where we were, to the location to resolve the problem, which meant voters were sometimes waiting in order to check in or to cast their ballot, whereas on Election Day at PCIS, if there was an issue, within five minutes tops, that issue was resolved. And that, that was exceedingly useful for our ability to run a smooth, efficient election. For what it's worth, I thought the setup worked really well. Voters were flowing in very seamlessly, and there was almost never a line. There was, you know, occasionally you'd see a couple people waiting to get checked in, which would have happened regardless if they were voting at Plymouth North or if they were voting at PCIS. There wasn't a big line of people waiting to get into the building, waiting to get to their precinct check-in table, which is exactly what we planned for. So I was very excited to see that the setup and the structure worked well in getting voters in and out efficiently. And I'll turn it over to Kelly to speak to her experience.
I figured it's best if I tell you my quotes. So what I, what I thought was best, it's the first time in the three years that I've been here, and many elections, I haven't counted them yet, that I was able to visit every single polling location and have a good discussion with the wardens and the clerks and even the election workers, and find out how things are going, definitely trying to get the feedback. But it was, and I know three of, three out of the five locations, I went to three different times. So they saw me coming in and out and understood that it was working. So it definitely helped to have the election coordinator covering, you know, six precincts, and I kind of covered the other 12 to a certain degree, but, and we were able to get the ballots out, the ballots that were, voters were dropping in the drop box, the ballot box, on Saturday, we were able to get most of those to the polling locations for them to be processed. So... Another great thing that came out of this consolidation, at least I consider it to be a great thing, is we purchased those trailers of all the election equipment. All the, that picture of the barrel, the machines are not in there, it's just a plastic box where the ballots go into, and then on the left you'll see those are the folded voting booths. Those are the voting booths that they set up and the stanchions and the signs. No longer is the voting equipment spread out among 14 locations, no longer is it stored in a restroom at Federal Farmness in the girls' bathroom, I was told. It is now parked at DPW. There's still more to come on this. We gotta, we gotta do a better packing and better organization in the trailer, but we worked very closely with the school, the admin. I see that the DPW director is here this evening. Thank you very much to you and your staff for your cooperation. We were able to get all the equipment to the locations, the custodians at the school set them up, and then they broke them down, and then on Monday morning, we went back and picked them, picked up all the equipment, and now it is, they are in the storage trailers at the DPW. So it's good to have all that equipment in one location and know, do an inventory of what we have and what we don't have. So we, we talked about what we thought our investments and savings would be, so these are actually the actual costs. We projected that we would need an investment of $34,000. We actually had $34,050. I apologize for the $50 over budget, but I think it was well worth it for many, for the consolidation. And, you know, more to come with some of this, you know, there's definitely more investment we need to make to make it go a little bit farther, flow a little bit better, but we'll make those within the budget. And we projected savings of $6,700, and based on what we could tell between custodial time and police, we saved $7,000 for this election. So our final thoughts. We believe it was a successful transition to the new locations, and we have at least two more times, the May 2026 local election and the September primary, that we don't usually have a high turnout, like especially the primary, that we can really tweak and understand what we need. We've learned a lot of things, and needless to say, we'll be taking those lessons and implementing them for future elections. And lastly, a huge thank you to the school administration, the facilities, DPW, the school custodians, and I'd like to give a particular shout-out to the election coordinator, Tyler, because a lot of this would not have been able to happen without everybody working together. So, thank you. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. McElrath. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kelly, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the work that you and your team did on Election Day. It's certainly not easy covering a town of this size. You mentioned that there was 8,125 voters or ballots cast, and that that was the highest in 10 years. Did you go back beyond 10 years?
No, we just, because you couldn't really compare the percentages...
Sure.
...because the voters have been going up.
Yep.
So that, so we, like I said, we went back to 2015. I could do a little bit more research, but I really think 8,125 for a local election is probably one of the biggest turnouts.
I would agree with that. So I would, I would just, as I did at last week's meeting, say that I don't think that the vote was suppressed in any way, shape, or form. Can you go back to the trailers real quick? Are these, like outside in the parking lot at the DPW or are they inside?
No, no, they're locked behind a fence, I believe. And there's, and we have locks to them.
Are they, but are they, are they undercover somewhere or are they out in open air?
They're out in open air, but I've done this in my previous community, and I started it back in 2014, and never do we have an issue with any of the equipment.
I assume that those machines are expensive.
So keep in mind, that's just plastic in there.
Okay.
That, the tabulator that you put your ballot in that takes it, that machinery is locked in a vault in the town clerk's office. That slides in and out of that plastic bin that just holds the ballot.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Iaquinto?
Kelly, this was the best possible outcome for this, so congratulations to you and your team. And I was at PCIS, I voted at PCIS, and it was, it was seamless. It really was. So very impressive. I'm just curious if you got any feedback from residents. I saw that you had some, you know, just some high-level feedback from some of the workers there that day, but have you heard from any residents?
Well, the voters were walking in saying that it looked nice, it looked professional. It's not what they expected. I personally have, have an antidote of someone that I spoke to on Sunday that usually walked at Federal Farmness and was a little concerned, because he knew he could usually get in in 10 minutes, in and out, and he's like, there were a little bit more cars, I was a little concerned, but I got in, I voted, and I got out, and he goes, and it probably took me 10 minutes. So has Tyler, has the, has Tyler alluded to, if you didn't have a line when you usually went to vote, you're not going to have a line because we consolidated the polling locations.
And then another question that I had, or maybe it's more of a comment. I know the 15% turnout is impressive, but I really feel like we can do a lot better than that.
I agree with you. Unfortunately, local elections do not get the same publicity, and it's like that in every town across the Commonwealth.
Totally get it, but I'm just saying, let's, if there's a way that we can build on the momentum, I think that would be amazing.
Yeah.
Maybe working with, you know, different groups around town that are also interested in, in improving voter turnout, because this was, this was very encouraging.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
All right. Mr. Quintle?
Yeah, Kelly, I just want to say, the job well done. As I sat and watched you, and it was amazing. I think it was, what, 30 minutes, 35 minutes, and it was all done and counted. It was, you really, you all did a good job, and it wasn't that many of you in the, in the office. I think it was, what, you and two others?
Correct.
Yeah. It was amazing. So I just think you need a little more parking, unloading area, loading zone.
Yep.
And the question I got, I believe it was, the number was 1366 for PCIS?
Yes.
What roughly is the average number for the, or any precinct, I guess?
The average number for turnout for precincts is usually around 203, 250 to 350, I would say. Some of the larger precincts are usually over 400, but for those locations, it was usually around 300, based on what I remember seeing from past elections. So, you know, six times 300 is 1,800, so it was a little bit less than that. But keep in mind, this is Election Day turnout. That doesn't include the 3,480 people that voted early.
Right.
Because those are not calculated in those numbers.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's for the record to show that, you know, the voting was up, it wasn't actually decreased, and that's, that's a good sign.
And on that note, part of the reason, I didn't include it in the update, but part of the reason why we were able to get the official, the unofficial results posted a little bit earlier than in the past, is because I was able to assign one person from each location to bring back the machine that much faster, and I didn't have to wait until the warden was done counting the hand counts, counting the write-ins, you know, at 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night.
Right.
We could get those machines in earlier, which is why we were able to get the results that much, that much sooner, the unofficial results.
Mr. Kohan?
Kelly, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My, I do have some reservations about reducing the number of polling locations in Plymouth, but I have no reservations about your staff and your ability to bring this, these services to the Plymouth in these important election cycles. I've been watching the clerk's office for many years, collecting numbers, and since 2026, 16, I've been working on a digital spreadsheet, shared Google Doc. It's unofficial, but we have, we train people to go out to capture these disinformation. So I'm very familiar with the voting trends and the purpose of collecting that information as soon as possible, and the dilemmas that you've had to encounter over time with equipment, equipment not working efficiently. So I knew that consoling, getting down to a few locations was going to give the staff only to, you know, increase that efficiency. I was at precinct, PCIS, for my precinct, precinct 3, and I was voting, and my, my ballot got stuck in the machine, but rather than having a full-blown crisis, someone just walked across the room and solved the problem. So I'm, I'm very in tune to that, and I'm commending your office on that. But at the same time, there's another part of this equation that we need to pay attention to, in that the voter turnout was a little higher than usual, and that was a result of, we had two ballot questions, we had five people running for two seats on the Select Board, we had Planning Board, School Committee, we had multiple mailings going on, where I think all the mailings that were done by most of the candidates were focused on educating the voters about polling location, changing locations. So that was one thing that we can always continue to do, an effort to explain to the residents where they'll be voting and where they think they might be voting, has changed. But again, those are the things that, that concern me about the people that we don't know about, who showed up at head school, had been voting for there for a generation, and that polling location was changed. There was information directing them where they needed to go, but they were required to now arrange transportation. You know, that's my, my core concern, and I, in moving forward, I hope to work with the clerk's office to see if there's any way that we can, you know, accommodate this idea of making it easier for the voters. I know we're making it easier and efficient for the town to bring this service in terms of running a good polling location, but I also want to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to make it easier for the voter, the resident, to get to a polling place and vote. So I understand the benefits of this, but also I'm cautious about the other side of this equation that we're, that we're probably not, that we're probably not seeing, but I hope to work with your office and the community to continue looking at ways of making it easier to vote, because we all know that town elections, the voter turnout is pretty low. Even at 15 and a half percent, we, we were saying that's pretty high, but it's usually even lower than that. So, you know, my reservations still are there with the number of polling locations, and I want to continue to work with the town and your office to address that, to see how we can make it more likely for people to participate in local elections, because they're very important.
We are always willing to listen and walk to improve voter turnout. That's, that's a main objective of our, of our office. So yeah, be happy to work.
Thank you.
Ms. McElrath, so last year, I think the total number of voters was 6,898?
That sounds familiar, yes.
So we're about 1,300, almost up from last year?
Yes.
So...
He's shaking yes, so yes.
Yes. And I know, if I'm recalling correctly... Yes. And I know, if I'm recalling correctly, the turnout from the five elections in two thousand twenty-four, the average was fifty-four percent were either mail-in or early in-person.
Correct.
And this, this particular election was forty-three percent were early or mail-in.
Correct.
Do you remember offhand, either you or Tyler, whether, what the percentage of early and mail-in voting was in May of last year specifically?
So we, so we couldn't, we can't really compare to two thousand twenty-four because that was such a misnomer because everyone got the postcard.
Yep.
And so we mailed out five thousand ballots.
Okay.
Um, and we did have a high percentage of those get returned where Election Day turnout was really low. Um, going back to two thousand twenty-three, I think it was more like around twenty percent versus the forty-three percent we got in, uh, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
Um, I can tell you this, that I track every day how many in-person early voters come. And for this election, the one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six, something like that, thirty-nine, okay? The most we've ever had is eight hundred and ten people vote in-person early for a local election. And that was for the NIP ban in two thousand twenty, in January of two thousand twenty-four. So we had almost a thousand more people come into Town Hall and vote in-person early. And if you compare that to the two thousand twenty-four presidential election, where we had seventy-six hundred people come in and vote over fourteen days at Town Hall, again, seven thousand six hundred people came in-person early to Town Hall for, over fourteen days versus the eight days we did. And that equals almost how many people came to this local election. So voters are now voting differently. It's not really increasing the, the turnout, but they choose to vote either by mail, by convenience, either by mail, in-person early, or, um, or on Election Day. And I do think, I, I will just say this one, one comment. I do think we got the thousand more people because they were afraid of what was going to happen at the polling locations. But hopefully this update and other voters that went in-person can allay those fears that it's not that difficult to find a place to park, go in, vote, and leave.
I, I think you, you did an incredible job, uh, at this and all the other elections I've seen you preside over. So I appreciate the work that, not just yourself, but your staff and all the poll workers and everybody, everybody, the police officers as well. So I, I commend you for the success. I know I had, I was outside of South Middle for most of the day and we had built the other locations, and particularly PCIS was really cooking with gas over there, so.
It was busy over there. That, that's one of the lessons that we might have learned is maybe talk to the candidate groups and maybe find another place for them to maybe stand.
Okay.
With, outside the hundred and fifty rule, but not so dangerous as when someone's pulling in. You're like pulling into a tunnel of people. Um, I noticed, because I got to visit the location three times, I noticed it was a little, like, congested at that area. So that's definitely something that we're going to be looking at in the future.
Interesting. Okay. Well, any other last questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Truly appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brings us into the next item on the agenda, that being the constable appointment. I have an application to be a constable from Thomas Dolby. Is Mr. Dolby in attendance? Is he in virtual attendance? Okay. Well, we do not have Mr. Dolby. We do have his application in our materials. I will turn it over to the board. Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, Mr. Dolby serves as a constable in another county.
Apparently, Mr., there is a Dolby on line. Uh, Mr. Golden, you may finish your.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll pause for the applicant.
Okay. All right. I see a Jana Dolby name on Zoom. Is, are you, uh, Mr. Thomas Dolby, perchance? If you, you appear to be unmuted, but I can't hear you presently. If you want to speak up?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. If you want to, um, introduce yourself and say a few words about why you're interested in being a constable, and then we may have some questions for you in regards to your application.
Yes. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for considering my application. I've been a working constable since two thousand and seven. Um, I've done a, a lot of work with Mr. Terrell, who is, is your const, is one of your constables in Plymouth. So I was looking for an appointment in Plymouth.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Mr. Dolby from members of the board? Hearing and seeing none, wish of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd, uh, like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, make the appoint, the constable appointment for Mr. Thomas Dolby.
All right. It has been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Has been seconded. Any discussion about whether or not we should appoint Mr. Dolby? Mr. Golden?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, uh, Mr. Dolby mentioned, he's, uh, been a working constable for some time. Uh, he, uh, served in the last year as a, um, as a constable in Barstool County. Uh, we've checked with the, uh, Plymouth Police Department, who registered no, um, concerns about the application. Therefore, I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Any other discussion in regards to the application? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Isaiah Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintal?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Dolby.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And thank you. That brings us into the next item on our agenda, Downtown Waterfront District Adirondack Chair Relocation. We are being joined by Mr. Rick Veo. Mr. Veo, if you'd like to take the podium, the floor is yours.
Thank you for having me. In, uh, Rick Veo from the Downtown Waterfront. Uh, congratulations to the new members. I, um, am here tonight because a few months ago, the Downtown Waterfront, uh, District reorganized. Been in existence for a couple of years, um, but we, uh, brought on several new board members, um, myself as president and, uh, also, um, brought on a marketing coordinator. So to really take the sort of downtown waterfront area by storm, hopefully, and, and, uh, make a lot of changes, make a lot of changes both in how we, uh, downtown businesses are perceived and the, and the marketing around them and reaching out to other communities, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the chair was something that was put into place a couple of years ago by the previous board, um, had come to the selectmen, asked if we could put it there. It is the current board's disposition and the disposition of many businesses in town that the chair really doesn't belong there. Um, it's an Adirondack chair. It doesn't speak to downtown Plymouth and its historic nature. It's become a hangout for either youth and/or homeless. Um, it's in need of a little bit of repair. We would like to relocate the chair, uh, to the waterfront where we feel an Adirondack chair is more appropriate. We think it will be, uh, probably used more for picture-taking. Uh, it will also be out of the way. So when the downtown, uh, gets revitalized, um, I'm not sure of the plans on that with the DPW, but I think it's, it's coming, that there might be something that lands there of a more historic nature. In, in lieu of relocating it, um, we would be looking to remove it. Um, so that's really everything, unless there are any questions or whatnot.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Veo? Isaiah Quinto?
I agree that it would be, it would be great to move that in a different, different spot. You're right. It does, it doesn't fit in and complement that, that area. I'm just, I'm trying to visualize the area that you're proposing to put it in. Would that be like the grassy little park area there?
Right. That is what we are proposing. We're certainly open to suggestions. But we thought, um, the, I guess, largest area where it had some room was across from sort of the, the Ziggy's Quadrant. There is a park there. I know there's some memorials and whatnot. Obviously, we would not want to be, uh, disturbing them in any way or be even close to them. I think we'd go one end or the other. Um, but I thought it would be a very picturesque spot for the chair and be, uh, far more appropriate.
My only concern is that that area is so beautiful, um, with the, you know, with the open vista. I'm just, I'm having a hard time. I can get there if I have to, but I'm having a hard time visualizing what a large Adirondack chair would look like there.
And we had those concerns as well. I mean, my first thought was if you're looking at the water, it would be the far left because there are some trees and some obstructions anyway, whereas the right-hand side, you're right, it is just an open vista. But we're also, you know, certainly open to suggestions of, of where else it could land as well.
Mr. Cohen?
Um, yes, it would be nice to, um, so right now, if you, that's where it's going, that little grassy area across from Isaac's and Ziggy's? Is that where you're looking?
Right. That's where we're proposing.
You're not looking at anywhere else right now?
We didn't have any other suggestions, but again, we're open.
Okay. Because I'm just, you know, just sensitive. Obviously, you have a few things going on there. You have a memorial, uh, to a local fisherman who perished in, in an accident, uh, years ago. Uh, and then you also have, uh, another, uh, memorial dedicated to an employee of the town.
Right.
A college student, Dawn Canlin, a memorial to her, uh, in her tragic, uh, loss here in the town of Plymouth when she worked for the town of Plymouth at Plymouth Beach in a, in a swimming accident, a lifeguard accident. So these are, you know, um, uh, important monuments, uh, to these families, uh, and to the community at large. So I, I would think that we'd probably try to some way reach out to the, the community to find out that where we're placing them, that we're not, uh, encroaching on, on the purposes of those memorials in that, that area there. So, you know, keep an open mind out if you're looking and seeing some other place, uh, on the waterfront. Those are two locations that are special to a lot of people.
Right. Yeah, and, and, and we recognize that. We looked at that, you know, and we, we, we thought we could get, uh, away from those enough. Again, I, you know, one of my opening thoughts were we, we certainly don't want to disturb or disrupt or in any way impede those memorials, um, and the flag that's there and, you know, and a number of other things in the vistas. I personally did not come up with a, a different location, and if the board were to say, look, we just don't want it there, then we would move to put it in storage until a better location came up. We're just very much, um, what we're sort of adamant about, for lack of a better word, is that we don't think it belongs in, uh, Shirley Square. We just don't think it's appropriate and it's, it's not serving a great purpose. And I think it takes away from the historic look of Plymouth, uh, center.
I, I agree that it's, and probably Shirley Square is not the ideal location for it.
Right.
Um, I just think that if you are placing it across the, at that elongated grassy area overlooking the harbor, that you place it strategically at the greatest distance from both of those memorials. I believe there's enough room to do that, but I hope that there's some outreach to those families, uh, in Plymouth as you move forward. I think that would be strategic.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Quintal?
Welcome, Rick. Uh, I don't particularly care for that location either. Um, there is another location down by the wastewater, facility. Uh, there's a grassy area there.
Yep.
And I think there's a big tree, like with a boat ramp where you drive in. It's a big area over there and it wouldn't be intrusive to look at. But wherever it ends up, it needs a little love because on my way back from the, uh, town green yesterday, the paint's peeling and it's, you know, I don't know who's in charge of it, but they need to do a better job, especially if it's down the waterfront.
Yeah, no, it, 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 it does need some repairs, and that was one of our concerns going forward. I mean, if, if it was purely up to me, I would probably remove the chair completely. Uh, where the selectman had, you know, been involved in its placement and whatnot.
Now, now that you've said that, you have my vote for that. Thank you.
Is there still, there's an Adirondack chair in Village Landing, right?
Well, there was one beside, um, Nico's that, that, I believe is closed. So there was one there. I don't remember one in Village Landing, but, um.
Yeah, there, there's one by, um.
By the gazebo in the, in the interior of the Village Landing.
I'm not even sure if the one at Nico's is still there now that I think about it. Um, I'm not sure if.
Was there, but I'm, obviously with what has happened.
Right.
Um, I mean, we're, so this is one of potentially three in a pretty close area if we're putting. I, I, I don't feel a need to keep it in Shirley Square. I agree that it
Right.
certainly stands out amongst the small.
Is that two for removal?
The small circular benches that it's next to in a relatively small park as it is. So I, I think, I'd rather not just deploy it somewhere and make use of it.
Sure.
Uh, to our detriment. I, I think it probably costs a few hundred bucks, but I'd rather, I'd rather not move the blight around.
Again, I'm on the same page. I just didn't want to come in here saying we want to get rid of it when you guys had supported it in some way and whatnot, so, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think maybe, I personally think maybe at least temporarily keeping it in storage and seeing if there's public uproar about the lack of a third Adirondack chair picture experience.
Fair enough.
Um, might be our best, at least short-term solution, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues. Mr. Golden?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion unless folks have further comment.
It appears not.
Excellent. Uh, I will, uh, make a motion to remove the Adirondack chair to storage until such a time as a, an appropriate location has been determined.
Second. All right. It has been moved by Mr. Golden, seconded by Mr. Quintal, that we remove and place in storage the chair, the Adirondack chair from Shirley Square. Do we have any discussion about the disposition of the chair, other than what we've already had? All right.
Could I add something or ask something maybe added to that motion?
I'll entertain your suggestion.
Sure. Uh, I, I would, um, ask, um, the DPW if there's any way we might be able to store it there temporarily, as I don't personally have a home for it and the Downtown Waterfront District really doesn't have anything.
I'm, are, we're getting a nod from the DPW director, so it appears the blight will not be going to your house.
That's ideal, yeah.
All right. Well, that's a comfort. All right. Uh, any other discussion? All right. So seeing none, we will place this, the chair, this is a motion to place this chair in storage with the understanding that the DPW director is willing to take on the burden. Uh, I will call for the vote. Mr. Golden, how do you vote? Yes. Isaiah Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintal?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the downtown wa, uh, so, sorry. That brings us to the Water Sewer and Solid Waste FY twenty-six Rates Recommendation. We are joined by DPW Director Bill Coy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. Um, before we start, I just wanted to introduce the members of the staff of DPW that are here this evening to answer any potential questions that you may have. With me this evening, I have James Downey, the Assistant DPW Director is here. We have Peter Gordon, the Water Superintendent, is here as well. Doug Pernod, Wastewater Superintendent. Rick Bossy, the Acting Town Engineer, is also here. And Lynn Barrett, the Finance Director, is here as well to answer any of the financial questions and also to participate in the PowerPoint presentation. Uh, the presentation is relatively short. Um, I will go through it. I probably won't read everything on it because I think it's, a lot of it, um, you've heard before. Um, as you may recall, last year, we were here before you. We had Raftellus, our consultant, do a water sewer rate study. Um, we had countless meetings internally. We met DPW officials. We met with finance, with Ms. Barrett, and I believe went before the board on, on several occasions as well to discuss what the recommendation would be. And Raftellus, what they looked at was, they looked at our operation and maintenance costs. They looked at our debt service, or what, what we had currently, and they looked at our capital going forward. I believe they, we submitted a ten-year capital plan. Um, this study was based on going forward for the next five years. They recommend that we revisit, uh, our rates, wastewater and, uh, water rates every five years. And looking at this first slide, on your left, you'll see the different tiers, uh, which breaks out the water volumes, tier one, two, three, and four on the left column. Um, it's in cubic feet. If you want to do some math, there's seven point four eight gallons per cubic foot. Um, most of our users, more than fifty percent, I actually think the number in the Raftellus report is eighty percent fall within tier one and tier two. Then the higher users are tier three and tier. Then the higher users are tier three and tier four. In the middle column, the current volumetric rates for tier one, three, and four are shown there. And then the second quarter, which is the summer rates. You'll see in tier two, three, and four, let's see, let's see, from here, two, three, and four, I always hate using these because you can't shake so much. Two, three, and four show a 10% increase over the normal rate, because that is the summer rate. And again, that's only for tier two, three, and four. So, essentially, if people use large volumes of water for irrigation, they're going to go into that higher rate. So, the goal here is to try to conserve water. So, if people want to save on their water and sewer bills, we ask that they try to conserve water during the summer months, which is the second quarter. So, that would be for, it's July, August, and September usages. So, we had to break it out into one quarter, so that was the quarter that we selected. The column to your right is what we are proposing. It is a 9% increase. Again, this is following the Raftellus report, that we increased the water rates 9%. And as you go further into the presentation, you'll see the sewer increases are 5%. It's important to keep in mind, our water infrastructure is aging. I would say that about 25 miles, over 10% of the system is more than 75 years old. And certainly Peter Gordon can tell you that he knows where the problem areas are for the most part, because he responds to the breaks in those areas. So, we do have several water projects that are underway, and we have many more planned. And obviously, it's going to cost a fair amount of money to address these issues. And, you know, we certainly don't want to kick the can down the road, because the cost will only increase. In addition to the volumetric rate increases, there's also an increase in the fixed rates, which is basically the, is based on your size meter that you have. Most residential properties, if you look at the first column, under meter size, the number of accounts, you'll see a 5/8-inch meter. There's over 13,000 customers with the 5/8-inch meter. So, it's relatively modest, even though it's 9%, it's less than $2 per quarter for an increase for those meters. And then you can see, as the meter sizes increase, the cost for the fixed rate also increases. In some of the larger users, you can see the bottom one, a 10-inch meter, there's only one, which I believe, Pete, is that Holtek that has the 10-inch? Holtek, okay. So, the vast majority of the customers are 5/8-inch meter. So, again, you'll see the percent increase for the meters, the same 9% increase as the volumetric increases as well. It's 9% across the board. Sewer rates, this is, the recommendation of the Raftellus report was a 5% increase on the sewer rates. They have more currently in retained earnings than the water does. They, their system is still aging, but not quite as old as water infrastructure. I think we're more in line with about 50 years for a lot of the sewer infrastructure or the older infrastructure that went in the later 60s and early 70s. And again, you can see in the first column to the left, the volumetric uses and what the associated increases. So, tier one goes from 654 per 100 cubic feet, which is, when you look at your bill, 100 cubic feet is a CCF. And then the quarterly rate will go to 686 per 100 cubic feet, and so on. And it also identifies the increase in the septage that we receive, which we do create a significant revenue based on the septage. And that will go up to .072 gallon, cents per gallon, and .085 cents per gallon for sludge. And we did look at the surrounding areas where the haulers can bring their septage, and we tried to stay fairly competitive. I think Middle Borough was probably the closest area. Sewer rates also for the volumetric increase, I'm sorry, for the fixed rate increases based on the meter, also 5% increase. And again, you can see the 5/8-inch meter, over 3,000 customers, most of our residential customers, the 5/8-inch meters will also have the same 5% increase, and it's a little over $3 per quarter for that fixed rate. And if you look down the columns, you can see the increases. Most of the larger ones are businesses, when you get over the, probably over 2 inches and higher, I'm sure mostly all businesses. So, they have much larger usage. And some of the larger developments, condo-type facilities would also have large meters as well.
Would that be, what would be the eights, there's two eights, what would that be like? The correctional facility or...
Where are you looking, sir?
Eight-inch tier?
Eight-inch.
Oh, eight-inch. I would have to defer to Peter Gordon. Peter, do you know who the two?
I'm sorry, I just got a call from the police.
Okay. The eight-inch meters, do you know who those two are?
One of the eight-inch meters is at the correctional facility.
Okay.
And one of them is at the hospital.
Hospital, the bid, okay.
Hospital and the correctional facility.
Yes. Okay. So, sewer rates, these are what we, for the septage that we receive, the increase is actually 5.88% to be exact, and then 6.25 for the sludge that we receive. This is an important shot. I think what it shows you, if you look at the 2026 rate increases and you look back to your left at FY 2024, the average residential bill that, at least in this particular example, and I think probably the vast majority of them, will still be less than what they were paying in FY 2024. So, you can see the volumetric charges, the top part of the bar, and then volumetric is the green, and then the blue is the fixed for the sewer, and yellow is fixed for the water. So, again, FY 2026, even with these increases proposed, the average residential bill should still be just slightly less than what they were in FY '24. Next year, you'll see an increase at that point. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Lynn Barrett to present the actual financial component.
Good evening. What this slide represents is the fiscal '26 budget. So, down below the operating budget, that's what was voted at town meeting for salaries, expense, debt service, and transfer to OPEB. Also, the enterprise funds, reimbursement to the general fund for indirect costs, which is primarily fringe benefits for the employees, plus some other allocated costs from departments. So, above, the yellow highlighted area is the areas that you would be generating this vote for tonight with regards to the revenue. So, the rate, utility rate charges includes the water and sewer rates, the volumetric, plus the base rates for every quarter. So, the numbers that we would generate in revenue with those increases is what you see in those numbers. And then, we're showing you the other revenue sources that are used to offset, that go into the enterprise funds, that would offset increases in those rates. So, we collect within each enterprise fund penalties and interest for, unfortunately, people who pay late. So, revenue comes in from that. Other service charges in the water department, that would be service connection fees and other connection services. Same thing for the sewer. On the sewer side, we collect betterments for the area off of Sammaset and Pilgrim Hill Road that we connected them to the sewer. So, revenue comes in every year from the betterments on that. The septage receipts, that is an area of revenue for the sewer enterprise fund. And again, tonight, we're asking you to increase the septage and the sludge rates. We also take in on an annual basis connections on Sewer Bank for the sewer fund, that's, you know, Sewer Bank revenue. The water enterprise fund has some utility accounts that are in a power purchase agreement, so they receive some solar credit revenue. And then their, each enterprise fund earns its own interest. So, there's also investment income coming into each enterprise fund. So, the total revenues equal the total expenses, so each budget is, excuse me, is balanced. The next slide here, oops. Actually, I'm just going to skip over that one for right now and go back. In this slide, I just want to show you the balance of the retained earnings for water and sewer. So, another reason why we build up the retained earnings is to use for capital infrastructure improvements in both the water and the sewer enterprise fund. For years, the sewer department was not operating 100% to collect, you know, its own revenues. Over the years, we built up, you know, a sewer rate structure to cover 100% of their costs. They've been doing really well. It's also paying for 100% of the debt service. We never had to charge the general fund for any of the sewer force main repairs and bypass. And the fund has actually been able to build up, you know, a little bit of retained earnings balance to help with infrastructure improvements. On the water side, we have many more infrastructure improvement projects, and we need to continue to build up that retained earning balance. So, right now, we have a balance of about 852,000 in the water enterprise fund, and that needs to increase. So, it's just another reason why, based on the Raftellus report, they included the five-year capital plan for both water and sewer. So, these rate increases are going to help build up these funds for that purpose, to cover infrastructure. So, at this point, I'm just, I'll go back, because the next item that we were going to talk about was solid waste rates, but we're recommending no change. So, just wanted to mention that to you, okay? And no change to the bag prices for the transfer station, for the people that use it. Okay? And again, this is the same operating budget, revenues that we collect in the solid waste enterprise fund to help offset, to pay for the expenses in the enterprise fund. And this fund is balanced, just like the other two. And this is the retained earnings. Down at the bottom there, you'll see that's the retained earning balance for the solid waste enterprise fund. So, in summary, we're asking you for a vote on the water volumetric and fixed rate charges to increase 9%. We're asking you for a vote to continue to keep the summer rate, which is that second quarter. It's a 10% increase from the other rates. We're asking you to keep that, and that would also have a 9% increase like the other regular tier. The sewer, we're asking for a vote of sewer volumetric and fixed charge rate increase of 5%. We're asking you to increase the septage receiving rate to 70.072 cents a gallon, and increase the sludge receiving rate to .085 a gallon. And again, no change in the solid waste rates. And that's it.
Okay, thank you to Mr. Coyle and Ms. Barrett, and Mr. Gordon, of course. Any questions from any members of the board? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lynn, thanks for the presentation, and Bill, you as well. Even though we're not recommending a change in the solid waste rates, do we still have to set the rate?
So, yes, if you would just set the rates to be consistent, the same.
Okay.
Mr. Quintle?
Lynn, I want to do a drawing here. Previous couple of slides, I think, if I saw it right, was 151,000 in late fees?
I'm sorry. Yeah, penalties and interest, 151,000. Is that number up from like, you know, if you don't have it, I understand, more than the year before or...
It's pretty consistent.
Pretty consistent.
Yep.
Because the issue I have with that, if that's what you're seeing, then that tells me that there's an amount of people that are struggling. And to mix it all together, the people are going to pay more in the summer. Some might have swimming pools, some have gardens, and some kids, when they're little, they go under the hose. But the other part of that is, you're paying on everything going into the sewer system. So, if you're filling your pool, you're paying on it going out, and it's really never going out. Same thing if the kids are playing, or the adults are playing with water, whatever. The same thing. We're paying, we're charging the residents on stuff that's not going into the wastewater treatment facility. So, I have an issue with the 10% extra for that, and that's probably a DPW question, because not only are they paying 10% more, they're also paying on what's going out. And we can say it's conservation, and I've been around a little bit, so, we can talk about that. Every year, we hear price rates to the biggest users, but we never have a comprehensive plan or reinvesting into the customers, if you will, on how to save some money, you know, save on water usage. I know we had a committee there, and I don't remember quite what it was, but it got a little spicy at the end. But all kidding aside, you know, I don't understand the extra 10% in the summer, I really don't. But people that are struggling, by what you're showing me, 151,000, and we're going to add to that, we're going to burden a little more. Everybody says listen to the residents, and I'm sure you, the new members, who all heard this on the trail. So, I bump into a lot of residents also. And I feel better saying, the bottom two tiers, the highest users, maybe they pay, and I'm just throwing the numbers out there, I'm not doing the calculations. 10 of 11, and let the seniors, if you will, the least users and the families pay a little cheaper rate. Every little bit helps, but when I see 151,000 on penalties and interest, that just catches my eye, you know?
It's because it's been like that every year. There's consistently people just, you know, sort of use Plymouth as their bank. They pay their bills late. It's, it happens across the board, water, sewer.
Are we also doing vehicles in these budgets? Any new vehicles?
All the budgets have been voted at town meeting.
But in these rates?
So, these rates fund all the operations for water and sewer. At town meeting, we used retained earnings, I believe, to replace, I think sewer had a vehicle in there, water did not, not this year.
Why wouldn't we put that to capital?
It is in capital, and it's being funded through retained earnings, which the enterprise fund generates retained earnings from rates. But that's where it's being funded, is through retained earnings.
Still goes through CIC, and it's just the source of funds is the retained earnings?
From these rates.
Correct.
Not free cash?
It's sort of the enterprise fund's free cash.
Yeah, right. It's the funds, they're retained instead of profits. It's supposed to be a self-sustaining, like a private enterprise that serves a municipal purpose. So, it's supposed to be, in theory, self-funded through the rates that are paid. So, for water, the people consuming water for sewer, sewer, and then for airport from fuel sales and rent.
So, my question really is, like last year, I think we had $12 million in free cash. Why weren't we using part of the $12 million, like to say, buy a vehicle, or buy a tractor, or buy equipment, rather than charge the ratepayer?
Well, because then we bought other town vehicles outside of the enterprise fund. So, if we bought a DPW, say, dump truck that did something else, we would buy that with free cash. But if it's going to be... But if it's gonna be working in the water division, then it would be paid for by water funds. So it's, it's dependent on the use, as to whether it's free cash, free cash, or whether it's retained earnings, which is, as Ms. Barrett explained, sort of the enterprise fund's version of free cash. Mr. Colahan?
So there was a water conservation committee a few years back. They had, they had made some recommendations in '22 about conservation, and I was wondering where the town is on that because?
We implemented that with the summer rate.
Right.
We implemented their recommendations, and after the first season of that summer rate, even though Mr. Cody is no longer on that committee, we forwarded those results to him to get his feedback internally, the staff did. And even though it was, it was the first year of it, you really won't see any?
So I just, I just was finishing up the question, and that was, Dicky does touch on something that people are struggling, and these increases are a form of conservation. But why are we not rewarding people that keep their volume down during the winter? During the summer months, these high voters, where we insulate them from that event?
There is no increase on the tier one. The summer increase is only on tier two, three, and four. We're not increasing on tier one.
Right. So if someone keeps their water consumption down, they won't experience that 10%?
Right.
It's only when you go to the two and the three and the four where you're gonna experience a rate, because, you know, it's just interesting on that. Now, we have these water meters that we install that do, they're able to detect leaks, and they're able to detect usages on an hourly basis. Is that information being gathered so that we can see how that affects conservation? That would be kind of an interesting thing to hear.
Good evening. Pete Gordon, Plymouth DPW Water Superintendent.
Yep.
These meters that you speak of, they do have the ability to collect data on an hourly interval, daily interval, and several other intervals, in fact, almost any interval that we decide. The meter has to physically be interrogated to get this data. We don't automatically receive this data from any one particular meter at any time unless we request that of the meter.
And how do you make that request?
We take a digital handheld computer and go to the address. We punch in a code, send the signal to the meter, the meter sends us back the data.
Okay. So you're only doing that on, on the occasion of?
We do this when we see high usage on certain accounts. We do this if we see no usage on accounts where we know there was usage. And this is just a way for us to figure out how they are or are not using their water so that we can build them appropriately.
Okay. All right, thank you. I guess the, the one thing that I hope that in the, in the world of the DPW and the water department, that we're doing everything we possibly can to reach out to the residents about water conservation. And what do we, from your perspective, and then maybe Bill's perspective, what is going on right now in terms of a level of outreach to the residents about? We're coming into this period of, you're gonna see a change in the tier three, two and three and four. You know, they should be alerted too of this possibility. So just curious, from your perspective and then Bill's perspective, what conservation outreach are we doing with the residents on water?
So the, the season immediately following the rate study, we did send out mailings, actually in the bills, to every one of the residents, letting them know that this increase for, specifically for the summer usage, was, was coming. We also did our best in that mailing to let them know that this is a conservation measure. It's not designed to charge them more money. Or for the town to make more revenue, it's, it's just basically designed so that they use slightly less water. And as we said, the majority of the, you know, single-family homes are in that category where they have a 5/8 inch meter, and they're building that first tier category. As long as they don't do anything crazy with their water, their bill won't go up. It, it's primarily targeted, the summer rate is primarily targeted at those people who insist on irrigating, you know, they don't turn their irrigation system off when it's raining. You know, they may or may not have a pool, that, that part, we can't really control.
Just curious on the, the, other than the changing of the rates as an incentivization on conservation, what other outreach are we doing to the residents when it comes to conservation?
You know, when we put out the Consumer Conference Report every year, there's always documentation in there regarding conservation, what people can do to save water. On the water department website, there are tips and hints on how you can, you know, manage your home plumbing so that you save water and you don't run your bill up unnecessarily. You know, there's, there's a few other ways, but that, you know, there's not a tremendous amount of public outreach. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you we, you know, hold classes on water conservation.
Would it be helpful to have a water conservation committee working group advising the DPW? And ideas, coming up with ideas to reach out to residents to conserve? You know, you, you know, we can, we do have this sole source aquifer here in the town of Plymouth, but we are stressing it. And we have to be conscious of that. So as Plymouth grows, and it will continue to grow, we should be upping our game around outreach and education around conservation of the water.
From the, from the beginning of the formation of the water conservation committee, you know, I worked with those people. You know, I attended every one of their meetings, and they had great discussions and great ideas about how, you know, certain things could be affected in terms of conservation and different ways to get, you know, the word out. We gave away rain barrels, you know, we, we had posters put up around town. We did a lot of things to try to, to reach people. People have to wanna save water, you know, you can stand on the rooftop and shout, please, don't use so much water, all you want. And you're only gonna get a limited amount of people who, who really, you know, are as concerned about conservation as we are. And so, you know, I enjoyed working with the water conservation folks. A lot of what we did come up with, within that committee, was not very implementable on a municipal level. But, but we did what we could, and, and from my perspective and my division, we're always open to suggestions on how we can reach people better.
If I could add, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, what we'll do is we'll look to see if we can get a mailing out again. If, if the rates are voted this evening, we'll notify the customers that the summer rate is 10% higher, and they recommend that they try to minimize their usage going forward during that quarter.
Be nice to see some cross-pollinization with not only water conservation coming out of DPW and facilities, but also, I know that the town of Plymouth has invested a lot of time and energy in the Office of Environment and Energy and our resilience coordinator in the Sustainability Committee. So that might be someplace where there's some outreach internally to come up with ideas to express to the residents how they can better conserve water.
Sure. And, and we can look to see if we can put out some posts as well. So we'll get a post out there, and we'll, we'll have additional mailings to go out to advise the, the customers of the increase in rate and the 10% increase during the, the second quarter of the year, in particular during the summer months. So if they're using irrigation, obviously need to minimize that use. To your point, it's not going down the sewer line, and they're getting charged for that. So if they wanna minimize their, their bill, they should try to minimize the irrigation. So, but we will send that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinton?
I just wanna add some information. I just wanna add some information to the summer rate discussion. So we did an analysis of the revenue generated from the summer rate last summer, when we first implemented it. So 64% of the revenue that we collected was from tier four customers, okay? So it's from the customers that are using the most consumption. The tier three was 20%, and the tier two was about 16%. So I just wanted to give that information to you. So it's not a large number of the customers that are hitting like the tier two that are getting hit by the summer rate.
Thank you. Mr. Quinton, did you still have a question?
Well, maybe a comment.
Okay.
What I'd like to see is conservation initiatives, if you will. Like somewhere in this budget, or the next budget, money set aside. So you can go out to some of the large users in, I don't wanna say tier four, but we have a lot of restaurants, we have a lot of, you know, and I said this to that committee that Bill referred to earlier, was, and that was my issue with some of the, you know, raising the rates without offering ways to go. And I know you can't drive around to every single establishment, but I know if I got a mailing at my work and it said, you know, we can cut your water expenses and blah, 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 I'm not a large water user at my facility, but you take restaurants, they have to be. And, and that's really what I said to that committee then, and that's what I say again tonight. It's, you know, it gets a little old, just keep going up, going up, going up, without the real conservation. If we're really worried about the aquifer, like everybody says that they are, and we have a coalition of water and something else, then we need to work together and do this. And it can be done, but until we start doing it, it's not gonna be done. So, you know, I, I just think we can save some water. You can still do your, your increases, but I think a portion, even if it had to be 10 on, on one of those or two of those, I'd be okay with it, as long as it was directed as to conservation. I, I say this all the time, even with the school budgets, when they come before us every year and we're all happy, they get a grant, and they put all their heating systems at one time, and this system, and they save 1.2 million. Well, did they reinvest the 1.2 million, or a portion of the 1.2 million? That, that's when I, we, we need to give an incentive that way also, if we're sincere about it. If not, then, you know, you should just save all this paper and make the recommendation. I mean, seriously.
I'll say, Mr. Quinton, a point well taken, and we'll take that under consideration, see what we can do. Thank you.
Mr. Colahan?
Just to reiterate again, obviously, the rates can be an incentivization for conservation, but I think we should go the distance and try to explore other conservation measures that we can convey to the residents. And I think internally, looking at the sustainable community within Town Hall that's looking at these issues, maybe outreach to them about ideas, and not, and also looking at possibly, you know, entertaining the possibility of creating the volunteer committee of conservation, the conservation committee that we once had.
Sure. Point taken. Thank you.
Ms. IaQuinto?
Yeah, first of all, thank you to everyone for this presentation. It was really very informative. I read through the Raftellus report too, and that did a really nice job for me, helping me understand the rationale behind the changes, the, the increases. So I just wanted to confirm my understanding. So what I took from the report is that these increases are being driven by rises in utility costs, which we all know, that there's a reality, inflation plus O and M expenses. And if there is, if we don't keep up with that O and M work that you have, then we could be in worse, worse situation than, than we are now. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, I mean, you're 100% accurate. The O and M costs, operation and maintenance costs, you know, they go up on an annual basis. I think the, probably one of the biggest drivers in particular in the water for the 9% is the need for replacing our infrastructure. As most of you all know, we've spent a lot of time in Manamit, replacing the water mains in that area. We have federal furnace roads starting, I believe, in mid-July. That's a major water main that we're replacing. And we also have Cherry Street that's under design, under design this year, that we're gonna be looking to replace as well. So we have a lot of major projects that are coming up. And obviously, when the, the water system was not that old, we weren't gonna be replacing it. But now it's, it's time to start replacing the infrastructure. But you're absolutely right.
And, and it also looks to me like, I'm looking at this projected annual residential water and sewer rates, that you're projecting that there'll be additional increases, that over the next three or four years, we're gonna see the increases continue.
Yes. The Raftellus report was recommending for the next five years, we look at 5% increase in the wastewater and 9% in, in the water rates, and then reevaluate it in five years.
So I'm always thinking about communication and education of the community to make sure that people understand why these changes are necessary, build in the conservation message of how they might be able to control it themselves, but then also maybe give them a long-term view, so it's not like every year, there's another, you know, another increase, another increase. I'm also concerned that people might tie this unfairly to the work at the Water Street Sewerage Project that, you know, that's still ongoing. So if there's any way that we can package the message and communicate so that people really understand what's happening and why, and what they can expect.
Sure.
I think that that would serve us all, all well.
Right. And in regards to the Water Street project, that was primarily APF funds. So it wasn't funding that came from the enterprise account. But no, it's, it's a good point. We'll see what we can put together with the next mail out we send out, advising the customers of the increase, advising them of the, the summer rate, and maybe we can identify some major projects that we have coming up to justify why we need to spend the, the funds that we're spending.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? If no one else? So I just wanna highlight primarily, I think either Ms. Barrett or, or Mr. Coyle could, but these, these expenses with the water rates, the sewer, and solid waste is having no change. But they're, they're designed to reflect the cost of delivering the service to the residents, and to be, as I said earlier, a self-funded. So they're not designed, the retained earnings, we don't, we don't earn a profit as a community. We pay for certain things to keep the, the operation going and buy a truck, or buy, improve a water main, or replace this piece of equipment. But it's, it's designed to be, in the aggregate, the community is paying, based on their usage, a rate that is commensurate with the continued operation of the service, correct?
That's correct. And you could look at water, sewer, sewer, and solid waste as being separate businesses. They're completely separate from the tax levy. So the tax funds should not go towards funding the enterprise account. So we're completely independent, so we have to adjust the rates as, as, as time requires that and as, as the infrastructure needs to be improved. And the time has come for water, certainly, that those rates need to be adjusted and is separate from the tax levy.
Okay. And the report that we received last year that's included again in these materials and was used for this five-year plan, if we, if we skipped out or, or lowered a rate recommendation in a given year, we just have to make that up in a future year or have a general fund subsidy to make out? So people are gonna have to pay for it either way, unless we decide people aren't gonna drink water here anymore, right?
Right. And I think each year, we have to evaluate the maybe water mains that become apparent to us that is now more of a priority than another project. So even though we have a 10-year capital plan, that plan is very fluid, no pun intended. So we are adjusting that each year as, as the need arises.
Okay.
So there could be other projects, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, there could be other projects that may, we may be able to push back further too. Because we anticipate there's a need, and that need may not be as great as another project that becomes more apparent.
But you're trying to forecast with as much exactitude as you can over that period of time what those needs are gonna be purely to continue delivering the service?
Correct.
Right. Any other questions? All right. Can we bring up the, can we bring up the second-to-last screen again, which has the list of, the summary of what you're looking for? I think it's the second-to-last. This one. It was the last, my apologies.
Here we go.
Okay. So this is a summary of the recommendations that we have. If there's no other questions, unless the board would like to take it differently, I would suggest that we vote by category, so that we vote to set the given water rates as one, then the given sewer, including septic and sludge, and then the solid waste rates. So I'm happy to further divide it if you'd care to, but that would be my suggestion. Do I have a motion in regards to the water volumetric and fixed and summer rate?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the water rates as presented.
All right. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Has been moved by Mr. Golden, seconded by Ms. IaQuinto. Any discussion in regards to the proposed water rates? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just make a general statement about each of the rates. These, the spending priorities have already been set by town meeting. We're setting rates to ensure that we're being rates to ensure that we're being good financial stewards of the ratepayers' funds. If we were, as Mr. Canty said, to skip a year or reduce the recommendations, we wouldn't be taking in enough to, enough revenue to meet our spending priorities. So for each of these, I think it's appropriate for us to approve.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Cohen?
You know, those points are well taken. I think, I know we're trying to bring a service to the town, and that's water, and it comes with infrastructure and responsibilities and maintaining it and, and dealing with the associated costs. But my point is, it's about conservation, that we should be doing a greater outreach as a community internally, externally, to, to take some pressure off our sole-source water aquifer, that it's not an unlimited source, and we should be doing as much as we can. This is a great presentation tonight. I'm hearing from staff exactly how they're following the recent reports, and we have to meet those obligations. But I think we should be doing more on the outreach and conservation to take pressure off this, our water resource.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any other discussion from members of the board? Ms. Iaquinto.
I agree with Mr. Cohen that we need to be doing more around conservation, but at the same time, we have this issue that we need to address now. So I think, I think the two need to go hand in hand, that we, you know, I would vote, I think we should approve the, the rate increases, but at the same time, make a conscious effort to increase the amount of conservation education that we provide.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If no one else, I would, I would say that I think the seasonal rate was a recommendation of the prior committee. There were other recommendations at that time. There are probably other things we could do about outreach and education, both to alert people to the rate increase, so they're not surprised, the first time they find out about the seasonal rate is when they get the bill after the season's passed. But I don't think we should look at it as the only way, as you say, Mr. Cohen. We do, conservation of the aquifer is a goal in and of itself. We don't want to just derive more money off charging, you know, getting more water out in the summer. So if there's ways to reduce the strain on the aquifer in other ways internally or externally, I would fully support that. But I think this, this is not the only way to do that. This is a part of that solution that should be more comprehensive. We can work with other existing boards and committees in the community, as well as some local nonprofits, some neighborhood groups, steering committees, things of that nature to get that out. And if we needed to do additional outreach, we'd certainly be, we open to that. I think, but I think our aquifer, as always comes up in a constant refrain, is very important to the survival of our community. Delivering water at appropriate times is always important, not just for consumption, but fire protection, other assorted needs in the community as well. So this is a component in a solution, but is not the entirety of the solution, I guess would be, in summary. Any, any other discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the associated water rates as presented. Mr. Golden, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
No.
And myself, yes. With four in favor, one in opposition, and no abstentions, the motion does carry. We have set the water rates for the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That brings us to the sewer. So we have sewer volumetric and fixed rate charges, and then septage and sludge. That would be my preference to take as a group, but I can divide it further if you'd prefer, but I will turn it over to the board to see if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the sewer rates as presented, including the septage and sludge rates.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been moved, it has been seconded. Any discussion about the associated sewer, septic and sludge rates? Mr. Cohen? Turn on your mic on.
Turning my mic on. New to the board, so just curious, is there, and I should have asked this during the question-answer session, but the difference between the sludge and the, the difference between sludge and septic, receiving septic material?
Okay.
So if there's someone to...
So I will open it up despite the motion. Would you care to explain the intricacies of septage versus sludge?
Yes, and I will let Mr. Doug Pennard explain that, so.
I'm sorry, I should have asked that before.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Doug Pennard, wastewater superintendent. So septage is your average septic tank, things like that. What we call sludge is, it's mixed liquor, is more what, in my profession, so some facilities, I know Plymouth Massac, they don't have a way to de-water their sludge. So they look at their mixed liquor or their sludge concentration, and that's how they determine how they want to waste that material. So they don't have a way to do it on their own, so they'll pay a hauler or a company to come in and pump a certain amount of gallons from there, and then they bring it to the treatment plant for us. Yes.
It is watering, along with sludge.
Yes.
So the difference between the two...
Oh, your mic again.
Oh, sorry.
The difference between the two, because when you're pumping a tank, you're pumping water in solids.
Right, so a septic...
That's why I was confused.
A septic system is more like influent, like it's raw material.
Right.
Where this has been somewhat processed, and you have some healthy bugs and things like that nature, so you don't want those consuming all the oxygen and becoming dead and settling, so they'll watch that concentration of those healthy bugs, and then they'll pump those off that site, because they don't have a way to process those, and they bring them to a treatment plant where we can process that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, we have a motion and we have a second in regards to the associated sewer rates, including the septage and sludge. Mr. Golden, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have set the sewer, septage and sludge rates for the upcoming year. That brings us to solid waste, no change in solid waste. Any, any questions before I solicit a motion? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the solid waste rates as presented?
So moved.
Has been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous, we have set the solid waste rates for the upcoming year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coyle, and everyone else that chimed in and helped answer questions and present. All right, that brings us into the 2025 road program. Joined, they voted once again by Mr. Bill Coyle.
Okay, thank you, Bill Coyle, DPW Director. As much as I love talking about water and sewer, I really love talking about roads. So James Downey is here with me to go through the program, and James accuses me of stealing his thunder, so I'll try not to steal too much of this thunder. But the two points I'll probably highlight is, for a couple points, is that at the beginning of the year, James and I spend a lot of time reviewing town roads, reviewing the beta report. We look at the beta report that was done a few years ago, and it's, it's color-coded, so we can see where the worst neighborhoods are. We kind of prioritize some of those areas, but we look at the roadway program that it's a balance of doing the worst first and keeping your good roads good, because you can't always do the worst first, because you just focus on your worst streets, and you don't maintain your existing streets, then you'll fall behind. So we spent a lot of time, James has, has spent countless hours driving to town, not that he doesn't already know the roads, but it's always good to look at them and see over the winter have some, certain roads deteriorated more so than others. So the program that we, we have before you, James will be going through, and I will capitalize on the two key points, sorry, James, is that the total funding that we're looking to spend this year, and it's very aggressive, I admit it, is $10 million, which is comprised of 5.5 million of town funds, funds, Chapter 90, other sources, and James will go over those, and close to 40 miles of roads. It's ambitious, we're hoping we can get those done. I certainly suspect that we may not get all of them done, but I want to point out, we do have a second contractor. If our primary contractor can't, can't keep up with the demand, we have a secondary bidder that we've awarded a contract to as well to reach out to, and that was PJ Keating. So Pawtucket Hot Mix was our primary, then PJ Keating, the second contractor, along with a separate chip seal contract. And with all that, I will turn it over to James to go through the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Downey.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Chairman, board members. Bill pretty much covered everything. So thank you again, Bill. But I will go through the slides, and before I get to the next slide, Jade, if you would be so kind as to queue up the video, which does have an audio component, so I do hope you can hear it.
So you've got an asphalt road. Every year, that road gets a little further from new. Left untreated, that pavement will only last 10 to 15 years. Some cities and counties wait until the road is in need of major repairs before they remove and replace the pavement. That type of fix gets really costly, especially considering all the roads in a network, each getting closer and closer to failure and closer to expensive intervention. This drains the budget and puts the whole network on the path to deterioration. But some agencies are getting 40 years of life or more from their asphalt roads. By preserving pavement with cost-effective surface treatments, communities are keeping their good roads in good shape for much longer. That saves the budget and the network in the long run, and there's less downtime for major construction, which keeps residents happy. Still, some roads are past the point of preservation. What to do with deteriorated roads? Why not recycle the pavement you've already paid for? Asphalt recycling treatments build roads with equal strength at a fraction of the cost, helping agencies save resources big time. Plus, both preservation and recycling cut down on greenhouse gas emissions and material waste. By proactively managing our road network, instead of just fixing one failing road at a time, road managers can put their community back on the road to success. Learn how to stretch your resources further at roadresource.org.
Thank you, Jade. So there is a lot of information packed in that video, and we will touch upon some of it in our presentation, and we will also be able to answer questions at the end to elaborate further if you have any questions. So I believe I said, for the record, James Downey, Assistant DPW Director, and I'm here tonight to talk about the 2025 road program. So Plymouth has a pavement management program, which we have established back in 2011. An updated survey was conducted during the winter of 2022, 2023, for over 300 miles of paved roadways. This survey provides the basis for the town's pavement management program, which is a tool utilized by the Department of Public Works to facilitate a progressive approach to managing our road infrastructure. In 2023, the overall road surface rating number was 67.9. This number, which ranges from 0 to 100, is used within the industry to assess and prioritize all roads, all road maintenance needs based on the condition of the pavement, along with other factors. By the end of last year, 2024, after all road improvements were conducted, the RSR increased to 69.9, a noticeable improvement with the remaining backlog of approximately 1 point, I mean, 131.49 million dollars. Plymouth's road network comprised of 378 miles of road, 303 which are paved. Those miles are broken into two separate categories called accepted roads and unaccepted roads, which both have certain miles of paved and gravel. That is what we covered in our program. There are some additional roads in Plymouth, like Warren Avenue, State Road, Route 3, which are not covered by this program because they are owned by the state, Mastott, and we work with them to address issues on those streets. Some other streets which we don't maintain as well include those in the Pine Hills and Red Brook, which are privately owned roads. So our road program over the last three years, in 2022, we did about 7.3 miles of road, four miles of paving and 3.3 miles of chip seal. In 2023, we did 15.5 miles, which is an increase from the previous year. We did 5.6 miles of paving and 9.9 miles of rubber chip seal. Last year, we increased again, and we did 24.8 miles of road total, which included seven and a half miles of paving and 17.3 miles of rubber chip seal. Here's a map that we produced through our engineering department, which, which shows the road network in town, and it also highlights the roads we've done in the past over the last five years. So this map here was from last year, and then we will be updating these annually to include whatever roads are completed in every following year. In the beta report, after the, every road was driven and ranked, what they do is they come up with a summary analysis of the road network, which, based on the length of the road, the area of the road, and the condition, the roads are fit into different categories. Some fall under major rehabilitation, others require minor rehabilitation, some are preventative maintenance, you have some roads that fall under routine maintenance, and then the newer roads that have probably recently been built or rebuilt fall under the no maintenance. So out of the 304 miles of paved roads, the total backlog of work was 131 million dollars, 379,584, which correlated to a road network rating of 69.9. This year's program, we are looking to do 39.9 miles, 14.2 miles of paving and 25.7 miles of chip seal, which would be an increase from the previous years. So the primary road work for this year, we have hot mix asphalt paving of the 14.2 miles, which we estimate at a estimated cost of $6,885,000. We also have rubber chip seal on our accepted roads, which is the 23.9 miles, and we estimate that at $3,550,000, for a total of $9,935,000. We will also be looking to do some chip seal on some unaccepted roads, and we were looking to do 1.8 miles at a cost of estimated $250,000. If you add both accepted and unaccepted together, we're looking to do about, as Bill said, about $10 million. And then just at the bottom there, just for perspective, when we look at the two different treatments between rubber chip seal and hot mix asphalt, if you were to rubber chip seal a street, it has a, you know, an approximate cost of $150,000 per mile, opposed to if the road got to the condition where it needed to be repaved, you're looking at a cost of $450,000 per mile. So for our program, we have some primary sources of funding. We have Chapter 90 that we've required over the previous years, and we still have an uncommitted balance from prior Chapter 90 of $1,873,289. And we do anticipate this year, Chapter 90, which would be available starting July 1st, we, we will get $2,377,409. And then we also have some town meeting funding. Back in FY '24, we had gotten some drainage improvement funding, and we still have $303,000 of that money. of that money left towards this year, as well as this year at town meeting, we were awarded $5.5 million. So if you add up all our funding sources for accepted roads, we have just over $10 million, which would be enough to cover our proposed accepted work. We also have some unspent funding from FY '22 for unacceptable roads, and that is in the amount of $727,656. And then we also have some gravel road funding that we would be looking to prioritize as well. So now I'm going to just, I won't read through these every street, but as part of the presentation, we've identified about 48 streets, 14.2 miles of road that we are looking to pave this year, and this is the list of those streets. And then the next slide shows about 61 streets that we're looking to do rubber chip seal, and that's 23.9 miles of accepted roads and 1.8 miles of unacceptable. I've also just included some slides. This shows some work we've done in the past. This is Boupan Road before it was repaved, and then this shows that street after that work was complete. Another street for reference was Nook Road a few years ago. It had fallen into this type of condition, and then we had resurfaced it as well. Rubber chip seal, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with rubber chip seal, but I have a few slides here that show some of the process that goes into completing a rubber chip seal. So this first slide shows a road that had some distresses that we wanted to correct. So before we did the rubber chip seal, we sprayed a layer of tack coat, and then we did a thin layer of asphalt shim to correct any deficiencies in that road's surface. Once that was completed and the rubber chip seal begins, we have a large truck that sprays liquid asphalt with a component of rubber that coats the surface and fills the cracks. And then immediately, once that truck has sprayed that surface, there's another vehicle behind it that deposits the chips from a paving-type machine. And then there are a series of rubber tire rollers that roll right behind it to get those chips embedded into the rubber membrane, followed by street sweeping. We do street sweeping immediately after, and then we do some follow-up as well to remove any remaining loose stone. So that completes the presentation. I thank you for your time, and we will be here for any questions or comments you have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to both Mr. Coyle and Mr. Downey. Any questions from members of the board? Ms. Iacquinto?
So I might be the only one in the room that has this question, but what is an unacceptable road?
So in Plymouth, in the past, we've, there's public and private roads. So public roads are roads that have been accepted by the town and owned by the town, and then private roads are those that have not gone through that process. What we do here in Plymouth is we take that, those roads that fall into that category, and we subdivide it into private roads that are owned by others. So those would be like the Pine Hills and other large developments like Red Brook. Those have homeowners' associations that should be maintaining those roads to their standards, so we've separated them. And then there's other streets that don't fall into that category. They may not have been formally accepted, but the town does provide certain services, and we've, to distinguish those from those that are what we now call private, we say it's unacceptable. So it's not a public road, but it is a road that we maintain to a certain extent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Quintal?
This one wasn't in your presentation, but it's a road. There was a few messages on Facebook today about dirt roads.
Gravel roads?
Yeah. And I've heard it from like several different people that I've walked in with. I know we used to have a grader, or two actually. So what is the status of those? Are we doing it, or we don't have the help, or?
So we do have a grader. I think right now we do only have one grader. And I pretty, he is busy pretty much nonstop, so he does grade the roads on a regular basis, but he does cover the whole town. So, and gravel roads do require a lot of reoccurring maintenance. So I think at times, and then depending on the weather and rain events, those roads can probably, you know, get in bad shape before we're able to get back there to fix them.
And then the other one that we heard, and I just heard one last week with, it was last week or the week before, up in our office, I think Jade sent it over, but when you, you keep grading these dirt roads over the years, you can only get down so far. So what happens when you get to that level now? Are they just like out of luck, or do we go back and back for lows? So this way here, I can answer people when they, you know?
Sure, yeah. So we do rely on our grader to make recommendations in regards to that. So sometimes he is able to use the material onsite by pushing it around. Sometimes when the potholes form, some of that material is probably moved, and he's able to bring it back. And there's other times where we need to bring new material to supplement. So we, I do believe he tries to work with what's there, but there are occasions where we have to bring additional gravel material onsite to fill in areas that require it.
Okay, are we like on schedule with that, or are we?
As far as I know, and if, you know, if there's any particular spots and they would call the DPW, we could double-check them.
Okay. Okay. Any other question? If no one else, I have a couple just to highlight. So in terms of, obviously, our Chapter 90 funding is based on our accepted road mileage, and I know that in the last several years, we have had a policy of trying to accept roads that would be viewed as more of an asset than a liability, meaning they're coming in in very good condition, need little or no maintenance for an extended period of time, so that they'd be a net positive to our Chapter 90 receipts as opposed to accepting a road that's in disrepair that is then going to cost us more money than we gain by accepting it. Would that be a fair summation of our strategy in terms of accepting roads?
Yes, I would agree. I think in the recent years since COVID, we had stopped accepting roads, but we are actively pursuing ways of bringing that back. And part of that would be, would include assessing the roads to make sure that we're accepting the roads that are advantageous as well.
So that brings me to my follow-up. So I know we had stopped accepting roads for a period of time, and we often get questions about that. So do you have a timeframe as to when we may start accepting roads again?
I know we are actively pursuing that, but Bill, I don't know if you want to talk upon that.
Thank you, James. So it's something that we've been discussing since I've been here, and, you know, part of, I think, the concern is that there's been a lot of roads that were approved years ago as HOAs, and with the hopes that the HOA would exist and maintain their roads, and what happens is in many cases, the HOA is dissolved, or for some reason, just it falls apart. And we get a lot of calls at our office for roads, and people want, when we pave our road, and we look it up, and it turns out it's an HOA. So even with that being said, we recognize that it is difficult for people to fund the improvements of paving a road to bring it up to a town standard. We are in the process of developing guidelines and recommendation, which is going to go before the roadway advisory committee first for their review, and then we're going to bring it before the board. On private roads that may be in disrepair, that may require significant improvement, and we want to try to give some options on what we could do with those roads and whether or not there's a betterment assessed, whether there's no betterment, but we want to kind of come up with a game plan. Because I agree with you, the more roads we can get accepted, the more state aid we will get through Chapter 90. So there is a benefit for us to accept these roads. Granted, the funding that we get for Chapter 90 is probably 25% of what it really takes to maintain them, but if we don't accept them, then we get zero. So we're trying to come up with a balance in a program of, even if the town were to invest some funds, it may be advisable to do that because the rate of return will be greater than what that investment will be. So within the next couple of months, I know that Rick Bossy's reached out to roadway advisory committee, we want to present it to them first, and then once we have their support, we'll bring it before the board for your vote as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then the chip seal process, some people have, let's say, strong negative opinions about that being deployed in their neighborhood. So could you just explain what the chip seal process is and the life cycle that a chip-sealed road goes through between when chip seal is deployed and when people generally start being more okay with it?
So, yeah, so chip seal is something that here in Plymouth, we have used over the years more so than in the past, and it is a preservation tool that we use to preserve our roads so that they don't deteriorate further and then cost more to fix at a later date. So with the photos, I'll just go back. So the first step is the rubber membrane, and that's what preserves the road. But in order to preserve the rubber, they do cascade stones, and they really overcast the stones because they want to make sure they get 100% adhesion with the stones into the rubber, so they put more stones than can actually adhere. And what we do is we sweep it, and every road is a little different, and we do sweep it the same day, but then we do go back a week later, and then usually typically maybe at the end of a snow season, you know, the snowplows do maybe knock loose a few other stones, and we do sweep those up. But there are loose stones, you know, I guess it is debatable on how many loose stones are acceptable. Typically, you know, we do get some questions as to whether or not those stones will further dissipate, and they do. I would say maybe that first year is probably the roughest with loose stones, and then a year or two later, there's much less loose stones, and I would say shortly after that, I mean, in some cases, we have streets that you can't even tell have been chip sealed after several years. So I would say that first year is probably the most noticeable with some loose stones. The next year, it would be a lot less, and then probably the year after, I wouldn't think most people would be able to tell, but there are going to be a few that have a keen eye for the chip.
Okay, all right. And then another thing that sometimes we are reached out to about is, I live on X road, I pay Y in taxes, why isn't my road on the list this year? My common response is that everyone on every road, at least in theory, is paying taxes, and we can't do every road at one time. But my understanding, in more substantive, is that your approach to which roads are prioritized is data-driven and trying to be objective rather than just who reached out to their elected representative. Would I be correct in that assessment?
That would be correct, yep. There's a lot of data that goes into what we try to do, and then, and that is a big part of it.
Okay, and that is constantly being reevaluated at certain intervals, correct?
Correct, yep.
So the various levels of deterioration of each road is being assessed, and it might move it up or down in a queue based on what other roads are doing?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Quintal?
Yeah, I'm not a fan of accepted new roads because I feel that if we can't maintain the ones we have, then what are we taking on more for? And that's really it. However, I will vary from that with our program. If anybody's that's on a dirt road or a private road and wants to upgrade, I'm more open to that than as myself, but that's always been my logic. If we're playing catch-up in what we just saw, then why would we, I know the quarto sounds good, but a quarto on a dollar is not very good, at least not where I come from, so I'm a no on that one. But that's just me. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. All right, that takes us into the next section of our agenda, that being public comment. Do we have any members of the public in the room who would like to give public comment? Yes, please take the podium and introduce yourself.
Good evening. Kate Sakarik, 26 Bradford Street. I just wanted to give, well, our town clerk's not here any longer, but I just wanted to give a different perspective on the new voting locations for the last election. I live in Bradford Street, so my whole neighborhood used to walk to the old, the school administrative building, and my neighborhood hated the fact, Precinct 3, part of Precinct 3 hated the fact that, you know, we were going to now have to drive on a Saturday through the gauntlet of, you know, Dunkin' Donuts and Home Depot. And, you know, I know for a fact that a couple of my neighbors did approach the folks who were volunteering at the voting and said, you know, I don't like this, I almost didn't come, but I was encouraged, and I know for myself, I did early voting, and I think a lot of people are going to continue to do that. But I would also say that I'm not sure that the turnout is going to be the same in the next election because I would argue that the candidates were largely responsible for the notification about where people were to vote, because the postcard that I got from the town was just a white little piece of paper. You know, it wasn't eye-catching, it didn't stand out, but the candidates were the ones. Some of them aren't even on the board any longer, but the candidates were the ones who really worked hard to let people know. So if you don't have candidates who are going to stand up and do that, I'm not sure that the next election is going to be, you know, more people going to vote. I think you'll have plenty of people still doing early voting, and I would say that, you know, you might want to consider, you know, making more dates for that beyond the seven days. That's number one. And number two, for the DPW, I would suggest that if you want to educate the public about conservation, that you start where the water starts, you know, that it doesn't just come out of the faucet. Because I don't think that a lot of people understand that where the water comes from, that we have a sole source aquifer, what that even is, how fragile it is. California learned how much, how important their water is, and I'm not saying that we live in that sort of climate, but, you know, I don't think people understand where the water comes from. You know, they'll, oh, it comes from some reservoir or some, I don't know. People don't know. So I think if you start from the beginning, where does the water come from, how fragile this system is, and how it's all we've got, and that's where your water comes from, then you might actually, you know, so if you have a little, you know, a video about it, it's great, or, you know, perhaps, I don't know, make the water quality report.
You exceeded your three minutes. Do you, I can give you an additional minute to conclude your remarks, or I can solicit a motion for further time beyond that from the board?
Yes, just 20 seconds.
Okay.
So I know the water quality report's probably something you have to do, but maybe include that, maybe instead of that, or include with that, the, where the water originates from, you know, because I don't think people understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from those in the room? Yes, Mr. Malaguti?
Thank you. Everett Malaguti, Vice Chair of the Visitor Services Board. I wasn't actually going to speak during public comment tonight, but an earlier item on the agenda prompted this. So it's in regards to So it's in regards to the Adirondack Chair in the downtown. So as one of the voting members on the VSB, which the funding for the chair came from, it was the intent of the Downtown Business Association at that time is to help bring more attractiveness to the downtown, to actually bring people off the water and up to Main Street, which was one of their initiatives to help with us. While I agree it's not the character, even though we are coastal community, it's not the character of the downtown for the historic nature. But this comes to an actual question. If the Downtown Business Association didn't want it anymore, since it was funds appropriate from the municipality to grant to purchase this, is it town property? Or is it the property of the association since they had to come before us to ask for a grant? And they, in my opinion, I think that would still be town property, and they can't just dispose it without a vote of either the board or the select board to actually undo that. And secondly, a couple possible locations for the chair, if they are looking for it, could either be at Depot Park, the entrance to the downtown, or it could also be the grassy area that's in front of Kilwens and the old 1620 area, since that could be another possible area that's wide enough, flat enough, has visibility for the downtown waterfront area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Anyone else physically in the room? All right, anyone else online? I see a hand, see an Eric Cody. If you'd like to unmute yourself.
Good evening, if I can get a picture, I will do that.
You're very quiet at the moment.
Okay, is this better?
Not really. If you could get as close as possible to your microphone, that may assist demonstrably. You muted yourself.
Okay, let's try again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I will, I will speak up, and I will, I will keep it short. My name's Eric Cody. I'm the former chairman of the Water Conservation Committee, which, which was active from 2020 to 2022. And the first thing I will say is it's truly refreshing to hear the Select Board actively discussing water conservation. Really refreshing. As Mr. Canty noted, the summer peak water rate that was introduced last year by this board was one of several strategic recommendations that the Water Conservation Committee made in 2022. There were two others that I'd like to remind the board and the public of. The first was that we asked the, we recommended that the town adopt a target of a 15% reduction in total water usage on the town system over the next 15 years. That may sound like a lot, but 75% of public water suppliers, at least at the time the committee was active, use less water per gallon, per capita than Plymouth does. So, and in fact, it would, it would take a 13% reduction in Plymouth's average water use to get to the median level. The second recommendation was to create a position in the Water Department dedicated to water conservation. We felt that the Water, Water Division would benefit dramatically by having someone whose job it was to promote water conservation, help develop educational materials to increase consumer awareness, and run pilot programs that would demonstrate the possible savings. Where might we get the money to pay for this, this position? Well, the summer peak water rate was introduced last year to send a price signal to consumers about the impact of outdoor watering on system costs, the cost to provide the water. Based on numbers I received from Ms. Barrett, it appears this rate brought in about $192,000 of additional revenue last year. So if, as Mr. Quintle has suggested, the Select Board wants to help water consumers find ways to use less water and save, this money could be reinvested in water conservation, outreach, leak detection, and other programs that will reduce water conservation, water usage throughout the town. Bottom line from my point of view, and I think the committee members would have agreed, there's no downside to pursuing water conservation in Plymouth, and potentially a significant return on the water conservation investment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. If anyone else on the Zoom? We do not. All right, oh, someone else in the audience? You may take the podium.
I'm just interested in when we were talking about the water usage, and you were talking about filling pools, but then you don't empty them. You sort of, someone, I don't know if it was you, Dicky, I, I don't remember exactly, but it would seem to me that people empty the pools at the end of the season. People that I have known that have pools, we don't have one, but people that I've known that have pools always empty the pools. So that would go back into the waste area part of it, wouldn't it?
We don't generally respond to public comment, but I would say that if they did empty it into the public system, then yes. If they emptied it somewhere else or didn't empty it, then no.
Okay. Just asking.
Understood, thank you. And last call. Oh, we have someone else on the Zoom. I cannot read the name. It may be Michelle Christensen, a voice has told me. If, okay, if you unmute yourself, you may speak.
Yes, good afternoon, or evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So my question is specific to the, regarding the roads and the distinguish, the difference between accepted and unaccepted. Thanks for asking that question. And also, thank you very much for making your comment about, I live on X road, I pay so much in taxes, why is my road not on the list? Well, the, the questions I get from my precinct members, I'm in Precinct 9, which is in South Plymouth here, that question is slightly different, is why is my road not on the to-be-paved list? And I was wondering if we could just get a little more clarity around the roads that go on the list. For example, Roxy Cahoon, Along Pond Road. I can, I can, you know, pull up many, many more, but some of these are very much traffic, trafficked roads, meaning that I know the fire trucks have to come down them. And I do get very concerned about that because they're already a long ways away from where we are, and then we're looking at, you know, maybe somebody's going to come and, you know, straighten the gravel or not, that kind of thing. So I was curious if we could just get a little more clarity. When they come with the road report, what percentage are potentially actually going to be paved versus just maintenance or making, you know, existing paved roads better?
Okay, so again, we don't typically respond to public comment. And in regards to specifically, it is a data-driven approach to what roads are on the list, for what purpose, and what, at what timeframe that they will be addressed, given on whatever status they're in and what status we want to bring them to. If you have questions about a specific road, I would ask you to direct those to the DPW Department, and they can give you the specifics as to why a given road is in a given place on a list and what its projected timeframe for being addressed in its given fashion would be. We have someone else on the Zoom? I appear? We do not. Okay. All right, so that concludes public comment. That brings us to Town Manager's Report. Mr. Brindisi?
Great, thank you very much. Just a few items to report this evening. Just as a reminder, next week, on June 5th, so next Thursday, June 5th, we will be holding the Cedarville Dog Park ribbon cutting. That's going to take place at 3:00 PM. I think I reported last week that it was going to be earlier that day at 10:00 AM. So it's been rescheduled to 3:00 PM. Again, the Cedarville Dog Park ribbon cutting next Thursday, June 5th. Coming up this coming Saturday, though, we will be holding a 400th anniversary cannon ceremony. That's going to take place, it's going to start on the Town Hall Green at 10:00 AM this coming Saturday, and then we're going to move our way up to Beryl Hill. This is to accept a gift from the Ancient and Honorable Artillery Company of Massachusetts and the Honorable Artillery Company of London, who have donated a replica cannon to the town of Plymouth. This cannon was delivered during the COVID period and was not able to be unveiled. So we've been working very closely with the Pilgrim Hall Museum for this ceremony this coming Saturday. So looking forward to that. Over at the Cal, if you go over there, you will notice that there's some construction in the parking lot. The town received, in large part because of our grant writer Tiffany Park and the Commissioner of Health and Human Service, Michelle Braddy, wrote an application to the Mass Office of Disability, and were able to receive a $250,000 grant award. And that goes, that is going towards a parking lot reconstruction, which will increase the number of handicap parking spaces by four. It will improve the sidewalks and add handrails as well. Again, so that's kind of a steep slope in that parking lot area. So the handrails will certainly provide some assistance to the folks attending the Cal. Tomorrow, our DPW director will be attending the Mass DOT Project Review Committee to discuss the Hedges Pond Road intersection at State Road down in Cedarville. We're hoping for a positive vote from the committee. If so, then, once they approve that proposal by the town, we will then engage with GPI, who's the Town Engineer, Engineering Group, who will design both intersections, both rotaries down at State Road. So I will report back hopefully next week with some positive results so that we can begin the design process for those two roundabouts in Cedarville. Just as a reminder, this coming Friday is DPW Day from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Camelot Drive. Bring the children. There'll be a number of things children can do. They can meet our DPW employees, they can learn more about the equipment that we use at the DPW. We're going to have some hot dogs, some snow cones, and other fun things to do for the, for the children. We are projecting this coming Monday, we're already working with the DPW, with the Department of Energy and Environment, and the Police Department to raise the full sale. So again, assuming weather works with us, we plan to tear down the building at the full sale on Taylor Ave this coming Monday. I just want to thank again Tiffany Park, our grant writer, and Joe Young, IT Director, for receiving a $200,000 grant award for a fiber, a municipal fiber project. So this is a project, it's part of our five-year capital improvement plan. It's such a $1.2 million capital improvement plan to expand fiber to all of our town buildings. Right now, the current fiber infrastructure is maxed out. This $200,000 will go towards a $1.2 million capital improvement plan, again, to increase the fiber capabilities throughout town. And then last before I end, those folks that are interested in applying to CPC, the application deadline is this coming Friday. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Any questions from members of the board for Mr. Brindisi? Mr. Quintle?
Derek, I just want to say thank you to you. Outstanding job at the green, very touching, heartfelt. You could tell it was very sincere and it was very nice. And Roxanne and everybody else that made that, it was special. It was, wasn't too big, it wasn't, you know, it was just right hometown, and it's really nice. But you did a good job, and I applaud you far. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I agree, it was a great day to honor the men and women who've served this country for years. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Brindisi? All right. Do we have any new business under Select Board discussion? If no one else does, I would point out that on our June 10th agenda, we will be having a meeting not here at the Great Hall at Town Hall, but rather, we will be beginning the first of a series of meetings that are outside of Town Hall in different locations in the community, which we're going to call Town Hall on the Road. First one is going to take place at the Cedarville Fire Station Community Room. That will be on June 10th. We will be reaching out to the relevant precinct chairs and steering committee members down there to let them know. But we're also informing the general public. That meeting will be light in terms of other items on our agenda, and will be primarily geared towards being able to reach out to the members of that village and listen to some of their concerns, and as, and if we can, to answer some of their questions. I anticipate that it will be a format, unlike public comment, which despite having responded to two of them, we generally do not respond to, it, it would be a public question and answer session. We would take about three answers in a row on a given topic, and then move on to another topic, and then we can circle back. I just don't want any one topic to dominate the entire meeting, but we're, we're not looking to get out of there at a certain time. We'll stay until people feel that they're, they've been listened to enough and perhaps gotten enough of their answers. But we, we really want to be out there and, and hearing from the residents and meeting the residents where they are. So June 10th, we are going to be doing that at the Cedarville Fire Station Community Room. July 15th, we're going to do one at South Elementary, so Southwest Plymouth. Then on August 12th, we will do one at either South High or South Middle, which geographically are nearly in the same place, but have different audiovisual characteristics. So we will be determining the specifics. And then on September 16th, we're going to do Manomet Elementary. So over the summer months, we want to get out into the community and listen to and hear from the residents while we have the opportunity to do so. So I'm looking forward to that. All right, that, yes, Mr. Quintle?
I liked your idea, but back when I brought it up eight years ago, the rest of the board didn't believe in it because they said Town Hall was the place to do people's business. Are we going to have Zoom at these locations? So we have alcohol licenses, are they going to be done? And that, not only that, you named all your precincts in the south. We have West Plymouth, we have North Plymouth, we have, well, this is DeSantis, so we'll leave this one alone. But I hope, I, I think this needs to have discussion, and I think it should be a docket item.
Well, I appreciate that. We may expand it to...
No, I, I don't want you to appreciate it. I am requesting that we have it as a docket item to let the citizens talk about it and let staff weigh in on it. A lot of staff goes to our meetings or assists, like, like a roundtable. I mean, there's a difference. If you're going to have selectmen's meeting in different locations, and I think we need to discuss that.
I understand your perspective. We are going to be meeting with few exceptions on a weekly basis, so we will be able to accommodate licenses requests and other topics on other weeks. We will have, it is anticipated, we will have a Zoom component.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, you're not answering my question. It's really simple.
Yes.
My question is, are we going to talk about it as a docket item so we can all weigh in on it?
We are going to be having this session on the road. So it is not going to be a agenda item, if that's what you're requesting.
So we're taking after Washington now? You rule?
No.
Because there's four other people here.
There are, yes, correct. But we would typically have taken a week like this off, so we are going to take this out of Town Hall and have it down there to listen to and hear from the residents. And those members of the board that wish to attend are welcome to do so.
So it's a roundtable?
It is going to be a public Q and A session.
Yes, okay, so it's not a Select Board meeting?
It is a Select Board meeting, but it will have an agenda item. That will allow the, the public to answer questions of the board and receive answers from their elected officials.
Why don't we do it every week?
Well, if it's tremendously successful, we could talk about that potentially as an agenda item, but we are going to try it out in these locations.
So we're going to talk about it after you try it?
Mr. Quintle, I think...
I'll go at it with you all night, Kevin.
Okay, Mr. Quintle.
Whenever, when I was chairman, whenever any member of this board wanted to do something as a docket item, I did it, and that's your job. And that's your job. You do not rule, just what the whole majority, unless we vote, then you carry that vote forward. And if you want, I'll check it with council.
Well, as, I appreciate your perspective, I disagree with it.
Good, because I disagree with yours.
Well, noted. All right. Thank you, Mr. Quintle, for your perspective.
Thank you for your ruling with a steel fist. It's catching on from Washington into Plymouth now.
So in other news, the Select Board has an opportunity to meet with Governor Healy on June 11th. We have secured that appointment and I've asked the Vice Chair to accompany me in talking to the governor about concerns that are relevant to the community of Plymouth. We don't, we are maybe going to get up to an hour with the governor, but obviously the governor has a pretty busy schedule. So we will need to see how that plays out. And we will, but we will do our best to bring the priorities of our community to the attention of the governor of the Commonwealth as your elected representatives. That brings us into the next item, unless there's other new business from board members? There is not. We will go into letters. Does anyone have any letters? All right, hearing and seeing none. Any old business? All right, hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business? Mr. Quintle makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Golden. Any objection? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Ayacuanto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you all.